Good evening, welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting for June 20th. If we could begin, if you could join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Following meeting is being recorded and broadcast through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Verizon FiOS. A recording of the meeting will also be available for viewing on our town's website, tingsboroughmass.gov. Also after instruction from the state fire marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there's an exit to my left and in the rear directly across from me. If I could have the board introduce themselves, starting from my left.
Good evening, Steve Norco.
Good evening, Corey Lambert.
Greetings, Bob Jackson.
Good evening, Bill Graemer.
Good evening, Kirk Olivehans, Town Administrator.
Good evening, Matt Hanson, Assistant Town Administrator.
Hello, Theresa Gannon.
Chief first. Yeah, he's gotta go. Okay, thank you. So first on our agenda, we have meeting minutes. Typically, we read our agenda. Tonight, we're gonna, from now on, we're gonna change it up a bit. If anybody would like to follow along, we have copies of the agenda to my left, and Matt will have it up on the screen. So rather than read the whole agenda, it's available to you. So first item, meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve and release the regular session meeting minutes for Monday, June 6, 2016.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, carries 4-0-0. I'm sorry, 3-0-1.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve and not release the executive session meeting minutes from Monday, June 6, 2016.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
That carries 3-0-1. Next up, citizens and business time. If there's any citizens in the audience that would like to address the board, you may do so now. Not seeing anybody. We will move on, and we're gonna take item 5A1 out of order. Chief Howe.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to make a recommendation. I am recommending the appointment of Reserve Officer Jason Kersmerek as a full-time police officer with our department, effective July 7, 2016. Jason has been a reserve officer with us since July of 2013. He has performed his job in a professional manner, has been highly dependable, and is the unanimous choice of my command staff. An employment background investigation, as well as professional psychological profile, has been reformed regarding his fitness for this position. Both reports submitted to me recommend him for this position. The deputy chief and I have also conducted a personal interview with Jason. I find him to be a mature, dependable individual with integrity, who is dedicated to this public, to public service in this community. I have every reason to believe that he will adhere to the ideals of our department and our community and serve us well. The salary to cover this position has been approved on the fiscal 2017 budget. The total salary for this position is $46,631 and will provide us better coverage in patrol, as well as eventually lead the way for us to be able to move one officer from patrol into a 3-to-11 detective position, which is missing for approximately 15 years. As everyone is aware, we've had, we have seen a marked increase in activity in town. It is essential, we have the, essential that we have the resources to properly investigate and follow up on crime and illegal drug activity in our community. I estimate that the impact to overtime with the hiring of this position will result in savings of approximately $10,000 per year, leaving the total net cost of this position at approximately $36,000. Further, we have a patrol sergeant who has been on unpaid medical leave since February. He has an estimated return date for light duty as of late August or early September. For the months of July and August, we will save approximately $6,400 on the sergeant's salary. The new patrol position will cost $3,600 in salary during that same time period, so we are still saving $2,800 in salary, and will have the benefit of added coverage on our shifts during a time which is the most significant use of vacation time and overtime expenses for our department. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for that explanation. I know that this is something that the department has wanted for a while, and we provided for it in the budget this year.
Yes.
So thank you for quickly getting somebody identified and bringing it to us. Open it up to the board, anything further?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
I'm all set.
Good. Town Administrator? All set. Okay. So I need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen appoint Reserve Officer Jason Kersmerek as a full-time police officer with our Tingsboro Police Department, effective July 7, 2016, and as outlined and described before us this evening.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate your support.
Next, we will go to, we're a little early.
Yeah.
Keep moving.
Mark is here, if you want to squeeze him in.
Which item number?
6A.
6A? To Highway Department?
Community Choice Power Supply, Old Business, 6A.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll take item 6A, under Old Business, Community Choice Power Supply. Sir, welcome back, come on out.
Good evening, Mark Capodona, Colonial Power. Before you tonight is the plan to vote on that we discussed in the last Board of Selectmen meeting. It's for your approval tonight.
Thank you. So for our viewers that may not have seen our prior meetings, if you could in a minute or less, sort of describe the plan and the benefits to the town.
Absolutely. So the municipal aggregation program is going to be a, for the town, is going to take everyone that's still on basic service with National Grid, put them into a buying pool to stabilize and lower rates on behalf of the constituency. It is an opt-out program, and the program, the plan has been hung for the last 15 days, prior 15 days to this. We had a meeting last, two weeks ago on the plan, and it's, you know, kind of its specifics. The plan itself is a constitution, just who does what, when, and what everyone's rights are inside the plan. People can opt out and opt back in at any time, there's no fear penalty to do so. And this is kind of the end of the local process, and unfortunately, there's still a state process to go. After this vote tonight, we'll go on, Matt and I will have a meeting, a conference call with the Department of Energy Resources. After that meeting, it would be filed with the Department of Public Utilities. There'll be a public hearing held conveniently in their offices in Soul Station, and then we expect to get an order out sometime later on this, probably late summer, early fall, and we could go out and explore the marketplace.
Good, thank you. So I'll just raise a couple of points.
Please.
So National Grid transmits the electricity to homeowners and businesses now, but we all have the choice of who the supplier is.
That's exactly correct. We're talking about the electron running through the wire. National Grid will still be everyone's distribution company.
Right. So even before this aggregation plan, I have the right to choose which supplier I'd like?
That's correct.
Municipal aggregation lets the residents come together as one and have more buying power, more customers, and negotiate a lower rate.
That's exactly correct. We kind of turn the tables on the suppliers with an aggregation. They normally serve you under their terms and conditions, and a municipal aggregation allows us to say to the marketplace, we'll allow you to serve us under our terms and conditions.
And there's no penalties or fees if we want, we can opt out, we can opt back in if we want to?
That's exactly correct. It's one of those terms and conditions that we make sure is in the plan. People can opt out at any time without fear penalty. They can get back into the plan at any time without fear penalty.
Okay.
I shouldn't say anytime, it's always on a meter read, that's just the way the utilities let us switch customers. But if they wanted to get back in, they can do it without fear penalty.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further, Mr. Administrator?
I just wanted to mention that during the public comment period, we only received one comment, and it wasn't even actually really a comment on the plan, it was just more of a question about why it's an opt-out versus an opt-in, so we just answered that question and explained it, and no further, no further comments after that.
Good, thank you. Anything further from the board, any questions?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board approves the aggregation plan as presented and authorizes Colonial Power Group to submit the plan to the Department of Public Utilities.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thanks for coming and explaining it.
Look forward to working with you.
6:15. 6:15. We can take our first public hearing. Item 4, Bridgeview Convenience Store, 172 Middlesex Road. We have a request to change a license from a wine malt package to all alcohol package store. Evening, Castle.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Pete Nicosia on behalf of the applicant. I'm here this evening to request a continuance. We need to resolve a legal issue with regards to the license that's being applied for and geographically where it can go.
Okay. I'll open the hearing and continue it?
Yes.
Okay. If I could have a motion to open the public portion of the hearing?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 4-0-0. Okay, so we have a request for a continuance?
Yes.
What's our next date? Or do you have, how much time do you need?
I would say probably two meetings away.
The next meeting is July 18.
The one after that.
So August 15, I believe, is the meeting after that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do we need to deal with the abutters list, waive the hearing?
Sure, we can do that.
Abutters?
So if I could have a motion to waive reading of the notice and of the abutters list?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 4-0-0. And a motion to continue to?
August 15?
Sure.
August 15?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 4-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We gotta wait for the next one?
We can move down the line if we want. Yeah. We can wait, yep.
So we'll take 5A2, Highway Department, appointment. Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Sewer Department recently hired a skilled labor to work within the Sewer Department. They've been taking on additional projects, we're all aware of. So that left a, the person they hired was from the Highway Department, so that left a vacancy within the Highway Department. We advertised for the position in-house and online. We did receive four applications for the position. James Hustons and myself interviewed all four of those folks, determined that a gentleman, Mr. Ray Riki, was the most qualified person to take on the position of skilled laborer. So we're requesting that Mr. Riki be appointed as that skilled laborer, as outlined in the memorandum. That states that the needs a Cory check, they need to complete a state mandated conflict of interest training, as well as part of that position requires the issuance of a commercial driver's license, which Mr. Riki does not have, but he's scheduling a test within the next few weeks. What I had stated to Mr. Riki was that he would have to have that within the 180 days of the probationary period to remain as part of the, as the skilled laborer in the Highway Department. The, Mr. Riki was the most qualified and outstanding candidate, so we thought that the, we'd give him the 180 days to receive that license, that he would be an asset within the Highway Department. He's currently a on-call firefighter, has been working for that, for the community, for about almost 20 years. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good, thank you. So other than the condition of 180 days to obtain his CDL, were there any other provisions that are not in the, in the memo that's in our package?
No, they're all listed there.
Okay.
It actually is listed also.
Is it? Okay. There it is.
Yep.
Actually, no, that's completion of state mandated conflict of interest.
Yep. 180 days and must obtain his CDL.
Hmm.
All right, it's in mine, it's not yours.
It's not mine.
Okay.
You have a later version. Okay. Any questions from the board?
None, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen appoint Raymond Riki to the position of skilled laborer as outlined above and as presented before us this evening, with a start date of July 14, 2016.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0. Item 5A3, appointment of an assistant accountant payroll administrator, Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, working with Kerry Colburn Dion, the finance coordinator, treasurer, collector, we've identified out of the 60 somewhat applications that had applied for this position, we narrowed the field down to about a half a dozen individuals that met the minimum qualifications that we were looking for. We asked, we went through the interview process, Mr. Hanson had joined us as well. We were unanimous on our selection of a Doreen Balu. She's from, currently works for the City of Nashua as a compensation manager, so she's very familiar with payroll administration, and has been in accounting for the City of Nashua for about 20-plus years. She came highly qualified for this position. She has stated that she's going to be retiring from the City of Nashua system. She said she was still young enough that she wanted to continue to work as well, but wasn't looking for a management-level position, but still wanted to be in the same field that she had done basically all of her training. So she, through the interview process, very personable, very customer-minded person. We thought the interview went very well, and we wanted to offer her the position as the assistant accountant and payroll coordinator. Be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Done, Mr. Chair.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Ms. Doreen Balu to the position of assistant accountant payroll administrator as outlined above and described before us this evening, with a full-time start date of July 25, 2016.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0. We'll move on to item 5B, Fire Department Matters, Authorization for an Inter-local Contract, Mr. Town Administrator?
I'll have the Assistant Town Administrator handle that.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, as you know, the Fire Department is in the process of purchasing an ambulance for the new town-run ambulance service. The quickest way for them to do that is through a consortium, essentially. If they were to go out to bid and get a custom ambulance, it could take three to six months. This could speed up the process as soon as July or August if they buy an ambulance that's already been, that's already been built, essentially. So most ambulance companies that are selling in the Massachusetts area use the Houston-Gallston Area Council. They pay a small fee to sell through that co-op, and the prices are competitively bid. So we're just asking for authorization for the Town Administrator to enter into an inter-local contract with the Houston-Gallston Area Council. Again, there's actually no cost to the town, but we do have to sign the contract with them. The cost for the co-op is paid by the vendors who are providing services to the cities and towns.
Okay. Good, thank you. Any questions from the board? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Town Administrator to enter into an inter-local contract with the Houston-Gallston Area Council for the HGAC Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program for FY 2016 and FY 2017.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0. And 5B2, Trinity Ambulance 90-day contract extension, Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Working with the Fire Chief and through Matt Hanson and getting necessary supplies, mainly ambulance up and running in the town, there's going to involve some training so that the ambulance service that Tingsboro would be providing will not be up and running on July 1. So we've asked if Trinity could remain on board for up to 90 days to allow the, us to get the ambulance, get the ambulance certified, get our staff certified on the ambulance, and get prepared, and they estimate that to be between two and a half to three months. So we've asked Trinity to remain on to assist so that there are no issues with service and safety, public safety in the community. Trinity has stated that they would be willing to stay on for 90 days to assist us and get us up and running. So before you have a, it's a, an ambulance service agreement that we worked on and provided a copy to Trinity. They have, they have signed off on that. I would just need the Board of Selectmen to authorize myself to sign on that for a period of 90 days.
Perfect. Any questions from the board? entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to extend the current contract with Trinity EMS, Inc., for a period of 90 days, and to authorize the Town Administrator to sign said document.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Item 6B, First Parish Meeting House, Authorization to Sign a Contract, Mr. Town Administrator?
As the Board is aware, we, the, posted a warrant for a special town meeting coming up on June 28 with one article, which is a community preservation article to authorize additional funding to complete the First Parish Meeting House exterior renovations. The, just as a side note, the Finance Committee met last week and unanimously approved or recommended that to go forward as well. So the, as we had stated earlier, the next Board of Selectmen's meeting is July 18. So what I'm asking is the Board of Selectmen to authorize me to enter into a contract with the Alston Company to allow them to start work on that prior to July 18, so that as soon as we, assuming that the town meeting approves the recommendation of adding additional funding for the project, that we can start on that right away and get moving with the Alston Company and start that work as soon as possible. The second piece is that we've asked CBI to give us a cost for some of the construction administration. We've asked them just a minimal amount, I believe is about 4% because Mr. Hanson's going to be working as well as I am on making sure that the work that's done there, we'll add some additional oversight through our office as well. But there are certain requirements that we would need CBI to assist us with in reviewing of plans and in the work that's actually done to verify certain things were done with intention of meeting the standards of the contract and the plans and specs. So before you, there are two, requesting two authorizations, one to enter into agreement with the Alston Company to actually do the work, and one for the CBI Consulting to assist us in construction oversight.
Good, thank you. Any questions from the board? So by signing this contract, they'll be able to stage their equipment and get things in place so that if the article passes, they'll be ready to go in July?
Right.
Perfect. Okay, well, that's good news. I'll entertain a motion.
Gladly. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the Town Administrator to enter into a contract with the Alston Company for exterior improvements to the First Parish Meeting House contingent upon support at the special town meeting on June 28.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion?
Comment.
Comment.
Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, Mr. Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, this, this process that we're going to vote on and do this in a minute has taken four years of our time to get it to this point. The, I'd like to thank the, our current administration, our former administration, my current board members, and many former board members and the residents of Tingsboro and many other boards that have worked so hard for the, the purchase of that building to see the need to fix the exterior of this, this historic building sitting in our town center. It's, it's a centerpiece of Tingsboro, as much as the bridge is, and I, I thank everybody who's been involved with it and sticking with it, and I'm, I hope on the 28th that the little bit of extra money that's needed to push this over is favorably voted on by the community so that the work can start in July, and by the, the end of the summer season, we'll have a very beautiful historic building sitting in our town center. So I, I thank everyone that's involved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Selectmen. I also just want to recognize you as well. I mean, the easy part is approving the funding for it, but actually getting ownership of that building took a lot of legwork on Selectmen Jackson's part. Personal relationships were formed with people on the other side to get the job done, so that's what it takes sometimes to actually, you know, get out there and make it happen. So thank you, thank you to Bob for getting that done. Okay, I'll entertain, well, we have a motion in the second. Any further comment or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0. And a second motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the Town Administrator to enter into a contract with CBI Consulting, Inc., for construction services related to the First Parish Meeting House project contingent upon support at the special town meeting on June 28.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0. 6:30, we will go back to our second public hearing, under Agenda Item 4, 6:30, we have Sun City Variety, 240 Lakeview Avenue, a request to change license from a wine malt package to an all alcohol package store. What's that? This is a public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to open.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 4-0-0. A motion to waive reading of the legal notice and the abutters list.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 4-0-0. Good evening, floor is yours.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Attorney Pete Nicosia on behalf of the applicant, Angioli, Inc. I have Mina Patel, who is the principal of that entity, and also the proposed manager on this license with me today, her husband, who's also involved in the company, the business is seated in the rear. And you know the business quite well. It's been operating for a long time. It's been a great business partner for the town of Tingsboro, and this is where you start to pick the fruit of your efforts in that home rule petition, getting the additional liquor licenses in town. As you know, on that side of Tingsboro, there isn't a full liquor store in Tingsboro, and there's a need by residents for that over there. I can think of no better place than an operating convenience store right now that already has shown responsibility in selling beer and wine. This will help a small family business get stronger, allow them to become more profitable, provide a new service for the residents on that side of town. As you know, one of the licenses that were issued by the state and ultimately the ABCC is designated for that area. So we think we, we hit the nail right on the head with what the town's objectives were in requesting the license over there in the first place. You have a complete package in front of you with all of the information about the license holder and the entity behind it, and the location, and all of the other required data that is sought by the ABCC. I've gone one step further, I actually had Mrs. Patel put together a petition where she had her customers, as they would come in, sign off on it to express interest in wanting to have that service there, because the discretion the board has is a showing of public want and need with these package stores. So if I could approach and just hand this original in to include it as part- stores. So if I could approach and just hand this original in to include it as part of your administrative record, that's important to have. So, I mean, she could have gotten a lot more, but I just tried to have her put it out for a day or two just to show you that, you know, the residents want it and the patrons want it. So she understands that the license is a privilege, not a right, and she's shown responsible service and will continue to do that. And we ask for your support.
Great, thank you. I'll open it up to the board for questions and comments in just a second, but in terms of the application itself, everything's in, everything's there that, that you need to submit it to ABCC and has town council take a look at it? It's all set?
Yes.
No issues?
No issues.
Any questions, comments from the board?
I have none, sir.
Mr. Chairman, you know that I'll have a comment. The, thank you for coming before us this evening. I, I know your business well. It's interesting when I look at your signature list, I know many of the people that are listed on there. Two years ago, when the, the sitting board worked very hard with our administration and with the state legislators to acquire additional liquor licenses in our town, we sat down and carefully crafted and looked at the, the demographics of our community and, and what types of licenses we would want. And one of them was for this very purpose, was to be able to get an all alcohol package store on the other side of the river. And I, I can think of no better location than your store or more deserving tenants of that license than, than the two of you who've run such a good business in our community for so many years. So I'm fully supportive of it, and thank you for coming forward with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman. Any, no further comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. Our, we're, we're not changing the license. There's a request before us for a all alcohol package license, correct? And I would assume the other one would simply come back to the town.
That's correct, yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen...
Oh, oh, hang on. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak for or against the request for the license? Seeing nobody. Motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries four zero zero. Okay, motion to grant the license.
And the, the, the requister, is there a...
Anali Inc.?
Anali Inc. There it is.
Anjali.
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 Anjali, that's a J.
Anjali Inc. Mr. Chairman, I could make a motion to approve the request for a all alcohol package store license to Anali Inc.
Anjali.
Anjali Inc., correct. My apologies. And as presented before us this evening. Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries four zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The buck? Okay, we're a little early for our next public hearing. Let's go to an item I skipped accidentally, five C at the top of the page. We have a grant acceptance, Community Compact IT Grant. Mr. Assistant Town Administrator?
Sure, yes. So, I know the town administrator mentioned this at the last meeting. I just worked with the IT Administrator, Jason Bolger, to put together this memo, because it was his first moment here. So he outlined what the grant entails. And again, as the town administrator mentioned, it's going to connect the fiber network between the highway, town hall library, the center fire station, and the police station. This will install the fire, pay for the police details during the installation, and the networking equipment in the different buildings that needs to be connected to the fiber network. Basically, we just need to sign a grant approval with the state. So we've included a requested motion for the board to consider. No cost to the town.
Okay, great, thank you. This is something that we've discussed before, and so it's good to see it brought to fruition. Any questions, comments from the board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board authorize the town administrator to sign a grant agreement and related contract documents with the Executive Office of Administration and Finance for thirty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven, thirty-six cents Community Compact IT Grant Award.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries four zero zero. Want to squeeze in the annual appointments or?
Just going to pass down a slightly updated list, and I'll pull this up on the screen just so we can request approval of the appointment list dated June twentieth, which you'll now have in front of you. I'll explain, there's just one difference from what we had online and in the packet. That's the addition of Christopher Ryder to the Insurance Advisory Committee. And then there was one slight change to the Cultural Council. We already had them at the bottom of the list showing that their terms are going to be vacated. They're still not going to be reappointed tonight, but their turns, terms aren't going to be vacated until December of two thousand sixteen, so we'll be taking those positions up again in December. Other than that, the list is, I believe, basically the same as at the last meeting.
So how would you like to take them in groups? We've got proposed motions for each section. Any questions or comments from anyone on the board?
The only outstanding one would be the Affordable Housing Trust. So the Board of Selectmen would, someone on the board would be part of that trust. So it'd be a board member, or if they, if the board member wanted to designate somebody on their behalf. But that would be a board member spot on the Affordable Housing Trust.
All right. And has, has anyone, who, who was the last person designated?
This'll be the first time.
First time, okay. Well, I know Selectman Rowe is involved with affordable housing issues, so I wonder whether he'd be interested in this. Shall we wait on that or?
We can.
Any comments, Selectman Jackson?
I have no comments.
Okay. Can we, can we push that off till our next meeting?
Should.
Okay.
Do we want to make the other appointments? Did we already make, Mr. Chairman? Didn't we already make a lot of these appointments?
We removed some of the appointments that you'd make, for example, Cap, Capital Asset Management Committee and Government Study. You had made some of, I believe, my roles and some of Matt's roles. You've, we took those out. So these would be ones that weren't voted on the last time.
Meaning you took them out, meaning we did them at our last meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So these are the remaining items?
That's correct.
Remaining appointments, which we didn't vote on at the last meeting.
Do we want to make motions?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion for the three-year terms, a motion to reappoint the following individuals to the listed boards, commissions, committees for a three-year term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, as is listed before us this evening.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries four zero zero.
Do we want to skip the two, two-year term?
Yeah, that's fine, because that's...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the one-year term, a motion to appoint the following individuals to the listed boards, commissions, committees for a one-year term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, as is listed before us this evening.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries four zero zero. Six forty-five. We will go back to our public hearing items. Under Agenda Item Four, we have six forty-five Feng Shui Kitchen, one fifty Westford Road, request to change a license or to obtain a license for an all alcohol restaurant. If I could... Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Steven.
Feel free to have a seat and introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Frank Zan. This is my partner, Steven Dunn. We both are managing members of this Feng Shui Kitchen.
Perfect.
We, we have been here for five years.
Excellent.
And actually, we receive on Facebook, my last time checking, almost three thousand likes.
Okay. Before we get to the request, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If I could have a motion on that, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries four zero zero. I could have a motion to waive reading of the legal notice and the putters list.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries four zero zero. So, good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
So I'm familiar with your, with your location and your restaurant.
Thanks.
Very happy that you're in our town. So why don't you tell us a little bit about your business, those who may not know where you are and what you do, and then the reason that you're here tonight.
Sure. We, we have been running this concept, modernized Chinese and Japanese food in several towns. And this is our third location. We have a cohesive location and central location. And here, we try to serve the quality food with, always with reliable quality to our community. And we are quite supported, very, quite popular and supported by each community we, we get into. And having here five years, we have a wine license currently. It's, in general, serve the public very well. And we never, we have been in the trade for, Miss Steven Dunn have been about twenty years in the trade, server in the bar. And I have been in the business for about eight years. We never serve any junior, minor, or we never violate the state ABCC rules on record. So we are grateful that get this license so we can serve the community even better. We get, people will be able to spend more time in our place and enjoy our service to, to the fullest possibility.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
So at your other locations, do you have an all alcohol license?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so you're familiar with service, not just the wine and malt, but...
Right, right. Yes.
Service alcohol and all the different drinks?
Yes.
Any issues at your other locations?
No. No. We have been clean since we opened business with four liquor licenses eleven years ago. Everything's good.
And so the town administration applications all in order? No issues? Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak for or against the request? Sir? Sure?
I'm, I'm...
Come on up if you could, just so the microphone can, can get you, get, tell us your name and address.
Yep. Edward Duffy, Three Lock Road in Chelmsford. I own, I'm the owner of Flint's Corner Realty Trust. And I'd like to see them get a, a full liquor license because many people ask up there if they could get a Mai Tai.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
So that's the reason I'm here. They've been very good tenants.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
You're welcome. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against? All right, seeing nobody, I will open it up to comments from the board, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. The, again, businesses like yours are the very reason why this administration, this, this Board of Selectmen went to get additional liquor licenses for our community to help our existing business owners to be able to be more profitable, to bring in more customers, and for new businesses to start up in our community. So, again, thank you so much for, for sticking with us for the last five or six years with, with your business. I'm fully supportive of, of this changing to, to a upgraded license for, for your business, and I wish you well.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just for the record, you've given me comments from customers through your Facebook page?
Yeah.
And this is two identical copies you've given me? Is it both the same?
Oh, yes.
Okay, great. Anybody want to take a look at it? Okay. Okay, if I could have a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries four zero zero. And if we could have a motion to grant the license.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, that the Board of Selectmen support the request for an all alcohol restaurant license for Feng Shui Express LLC.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries four zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks.
So we are a little bit ahead for our southern...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're ahead for our seven PM public hearing. Let's see. Seven, correspondence. So on this item, another change is I thought we would dispense with reading of each item of correspondence, unless there's something that a board member wishes to discuss or that the town administrator needs to bring to our attention. We would simply have a motion to accept the correspondence in our packets and anything else that was handed into us tonight. And if anybody has any comments, questions on that procedure? No? Okay. So first, Mr. Town Administrator, anything in the correspondence to bring to our attention?
No.
Okay. Anything that any member would like to discuss?
I did not see anything.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen accept the correspondence as was received and presented before this evening.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries four zero zero. Item eight, review of weekly warrants. And this is another item that I thought we would change up procedurally. It's the last one. So our town administrator is now authorized to sign the weekly warrants rather than the Board of Selectmen members individually. So I thought, rather than reading all of those numbers to us, the administrator could let us know if any selectmen had any issues with the warrants after review. They're available for review prior to tonight's meeting. Or if the town administrator had anything to bring to our attention. Otherwise, we would have the administrator advise us either way and then move on past that item.
Fine with that.
Any questions, comments on that? Mr. Town Administrator?
There's nothing out of the ordinary. We had five vendor warrant, five warrants between our last two meetings, payroll and vendor payments, and everything seemed to be in order.
Okay, perfect. No motion needed on that. Town Administrator's report? Mr. Administrator?
Yes, thank you. I just want to update the board on a, on a few items. One, in regards to the first item, response to Selectmen's requests. The, I just wanted to update the board, Community Preservation Committee approved and went to town meeting various projects to be done throughout town. One, a cabinet to, to put some of the Ting treasures that we had, it was part of the First Parish Meeting House. So we're going to get a cabinet that can store those things and have that, that cabinet locked and have those items stored and be visible for, for the public. A second one had to do with, again, with the First Parish Meeting House. A, the Community Preservation Committee supported putting a fence in the back of, or the rear of the property. There's an existing... There's an existing fence now, wooden fence, that is in some places in disrepair. They were interested in trying to dress up the area. I talked to them about possibly working that into a landscape plan of some sort as part of that project. Hate to see us put a fence in and then it's damaged during construction of the project or so forth. But that was approved, I'm not sure of the, if there's a timeline on that yet. But they did put some proposals together in regards to fence to the back of that property. And then, secondly, is the Winslow School, the Community Preservation voted to do some preservation work to the school, which was to remove the carpets as well as get a ventilation system in to help circulate the air. So, I'd like to move forward on those and getting different quotes for those specific items as well to try to move forward with that project, and I'll assist the Community Preservation as part of that, as part of that project. The, I want to let the board know that the Council on Aging is having a anniversary celebration of their new facility that's been open for one year. So, those are, that's scheduled for July eleventh, it's a Monday, Monday morning at about eleven. They're gonna have a carving station there for people to come and have a lunch. So, the, there are tickets available, so if any of the board members are interested in attending, Terry is holding on to those tickets for the board. They are complimentary to the Board of Selectmen if, if they choose to attend. Under contract, under also departmental information, Matt Hanson, myself, and Jason Bolger worked a few, had a few different meetings putting together the social media policy as well as an electronic communication policy. So, we've met, worked through that, we're trying to put together a draft document which we will forward to the Board of Selectmen for, for review over the next week or so to have the, get feedback and comments from the board as we move forward with that. And as I had mentioned previously, the Finance Committee met, met last week and unanimously approved or recommended to approve the article before the special town meeting for the first parish meeting house. And I believe, oh, the other information is that we did, I was in correspondence with David E. Ross Associates. The board approved the Tingsborough Sports Center, that was before the board. They're looking at making some minor revisions on drainage. They were before the planning board, I believe, last week. So, they've sent a letter to the, to the Board of Selectmen, which we would include into our next meeting on July eighteenth. They'd be requesting a, the board to review those minor modifications to see if that would be, if we need to open up the public hearing and issue them a modification or not, or whether they found, the board finds it to be insignificant. But I'll have that information, they'll put together, and they could come before the, the board at that next meeting. So, I can include that as, as part of the correspondence that we did receive that, I wanted to let the board know. And I believe that is it for now.
Thank you, any questions or comments from anyone on the board? So, I had a couple of questions, comments, so the, the tickets you mentioned for the one-year anniversary, what's the cost for those?
Three dollars.
Okay. And how can the folks go about getting them?
They would contact Barbara and her staff at the Council on Aging.
Okay.
Have those available.
Okay. Comment on the, the proposed fence in the rear of the first parish meeting house? I'm gonna talk a little bit more about this in Selectmen's reports, but I'm, I'm happy that CPC is, wants to do something over there. My only thought is, we ought to have a, you know, there's talk of having a comprehensive plan of what is gonna happen on that site, what's gonna happen with the barn. I'm interested in finding out if the board would support having somebody come in and give us a quote for a landscape plan, a landscape architect to come in, put some proposals out for what we could do with the parking lot and landscape area, if the barn was there and if the barn was not there. And I just, I mean, it wouldn't make sense to put a fence up if it's gonna be moved or something different were to go there, so. I guess I'd be interested in holding off on, on the fence for now. I don't know what, if anybody had any thoughts on that?
I could agree with that, not to put the fence up at this time.
So, there's an existing-
Not knowing what the, the future plan is in that landscaped area.
So, there's a fence there now, it's a wooden fence?
Mm-hmm.
Is it further apart?
Yes.
Is there any kind of, I mean, other than aesthetics, is there a reason that we need to get a fence up right away, or?
Well, there, I mean, the, some of the concern raised was safety, that they didn't want someone to back in to the pond. I know there are some, I believe there were some blocks or some logs or something, I don't know. You may have a better idea, you, you get to look at it more often than anybody else. I believe there's some, some logs or something that may stop people as well, and they were either adjacent to the fence or they were there, then they had the fence, there's some overgrown shrubs and trees there as well.
Mr. Chair?
Selectmen.
I certainly support your proposal to hold off on the fence. In addition to the items you referenced, there's also gonna be some work going on on the first parish. And having a piece of heavy equipment back into a brand-new fence would, would bother me. And so, I'd rather wait till the construction work on the exterior of the building is done before we move on the fence. The topography on the pond side of the parking lot, for the majority of the parking lot, there isn't a substantial safety issue unless you really wanna drive into pond. There's about sixty to eighty feet south of the barn that could stand to have some barriers, cement barriers placed in there so that there's at least a retard of vehicle if it started to move that way toward the pond. And on the north side of the barn, there's no, no restriction there either. And so, I don't know what's available at the Highway Department, but the, the small parking barriers like they use in parking lots could be set to define roadway versus the grass, which would keep people off of the grass, what little grass there is. And it would restrict cars rolling in between now and the time that the, the pretty fence goes up. And where specifically they go, I think that's up to the Highway Department, the town administrator. But there are, there are two areas where a car can, can head for the pond and not be restricted. The whole south end of it has the large logs setting there, which do a very nice job. And for the remainder of it, the car is actually going uphill to, and so I, I don't think that's an issue. I think it would be nice if the Highway Department continued its work on keeping the, the parking lot clean, which they have done in the past. And I don't mean for them to clean up after the construction crew on a regular basis, but keeping the vegetation down and sweeping it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would agree with everything that Selectman Lambert just said and the, would like to reiterate with the ongoing construction, it's probably not the time to try to beautify that surrounding area. We talked about it our last Board of Selectmen meeting, to reach out to the state and look at the curb cutting where the, the roadway goes through to see if we could extend that parking lot, paving, lighting, sidewalks. The, the issue of the barn needs to be addressed also, and I, I don't think we're prepared at this moment in time to do that. So, I, I, I think there's a, there's a number of things in play and probably a lot of public input that's gonna need to take place and a lot of reaching out to take place. You know, having said that, certainly all the things that can be done to keep it as, looking as nicely as possible would certainly be well warranted, but hopefully in a few short weeks, we're gonna see a lot of construction going on there. So, just, just my, my input, thank you.
Great, thank you. So, you have a sense of what, where the board would take this? Obviously, if there's any safety issues, you know, address those, if, if you need approval from the board, let us know. The funds would be expended by the Board of Selectmen in any event for the fence, is that right?
I, I believe that, I believe that's all the articles-
We'd have to have a quote come to us and-
Right.
Okay, alright. Okay. Any further, are we ready for our-
I think we're all set.
Next public hearing? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Voice support for the town administrator moving ahead promptly with the carpet removal and the installation of air handling equipment at the Winslow School.
Alright. So, thank you. On that particular item, could you just quickly, the process for that is to get quotes and bring it back to the board?
But the, well, typically, there would be, we'd look for three quotes and that would be sufficient, doesn't need to be a sealed bid process. We'll get three quotes, and if we end up signing a contract with someone, that would come to the board for authorization.
Okay. Thank you, anything further? Alright, so, our seven P M. public hearing, Farwell House, number nine Kendall Road. Request, new license request for an all alcohol restaurant.
Hello.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
If I could have a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that carries four zero zero. Could I have a motion to waive reading of the legal notice and the putters list?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that carries four zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. For the record, again, Attorney Pete Nicosi on behalf of the applicant, Farwell House LLC, whose principal is Sarah McNeil, seated to my immediate left. We also have Lynn Donnelly here, who is the principal of the Bittersweet Bake Shop, which is a business tenant in the property right now, she's part of this project. So, all of you know me well, I've been involved with town planning for a long time, on land use development for a long time. Myself and Selectman Lambert were intimately involved in crafting the two thousand and four master plan for this town, which included a distinct focus on revitalizing the center of town. Since that time, we've had a town center master plan, we've had an economic development plan, expounding upon, reemphasizing the very point of trying to develop our town center. This board and prior boards have made large strides to achieve those goals, a lot of which we talked about tonight. The parish meeting house is underway, town hall revitalized is a, is a gem of a property and is now a destination spot for a lot of different things. But I look at this as what would, in my view, be the crowning achievement of what you were trying to accomplish with the home rule petition about a liquor license in the center of town. This property is so strategically located to what we have going on in the center of town that I can envision no better project coming forward right now in light of what our zoning planning objectives are. This project, in my view, turns the center of Tingsborough finally, with all of the other projects we have going on, into a destination location rather than just being a pass-through thoroughfare connecting Lowell to Ashua. It's a reason to come here now. What Mrs. McNeil is proposing is basically a renaissance and revitalization of the property on the hill up there right now to turn it into a country rustic pub, restaurant, function facility, whether it's, you know, a wedding reception or, or what have you, along with the continued existence of the bakery, to really make it a signature piece for this town. They are prepared to put a lot of money into this project to revitalize that property. Granted, we have other permitting avenues we have to go through, which I'll, I'll talk about in a minute. But it's a great project. Before they sink a lot of money into engineering, further architectural, actual permitting and actual development, they wanna know that they have a full restaurant liquor license to support what they're looking to do over there. So, the question is, what are they looking to do? What we've done is we've hired Philip Thibault, who is a well-known architect in the area from Draken. And we had him look at existing conditions and try to give us some architectural renderings and a floor plan of what we're going to conceptually be pushing to permit so that you can envision what is likely to be over at the site. So, the handouts that are in front of you, I have a larger version of the three of them. The first handout is a comparative analysis of what the existing structural conditions are compared to what is going in. Solid line is the existing structures.
Hatch?
Line are proposed additions and new structures on the site. Right now, if you drive up there, essentially you have the main house. You have Bittersweet Bake Shop sort of tucked into the side of the main house. You have the barn, which essentially is used as, you know, antiques and different things of that nature. So, from a site plan, this just shows some interrelationship of what new and old are going to be, you know, from needs and bounds and setbacks and things of that nature, okay? Visually, what we think of down the road is an interconnected structure where the barn has been essentially renovated, connected to the bakery portion of the property, to the main house, to an expansive addition, which is gonna be a function facility on the other side. So, obviously, it's a rough rendering, you know, just to give you some idea as to visually what a structure might look at. Likely to be different colors, well-manicured, well-landscaped, tactful lighting. Think Gibber Hill Grill in Grutton when you go out there. Sort of that type of concept, in terms of what the property appearance would be, really high-end rustic look to it. So, what I've had them do is sort of break out what the plans are. This is contemplated to be done in two phases, okay? So, the first phase is a renovation of the barn area in a connection to the existing portion of the structure for the bakery, where you would have a pub and lounge restaurant component for the property. Bakery is going to be expanded, kitchen area is gonna be expanded for purposes of having kitchen area for food service for the future restaurant. Bakery continues to be an important, you know, tenant on the property. This type of business that we're proposing is gonna drive customers to the bakery, and conversely, the bakery, which has a long tradition so far in Tingsborough, is going to drive customers to this, these businesses. So, phase one is a redo of that section of the property, the expansion into the pub and lounge area of the garage or barn structure. Phase two, as you can see with the dentified, is the rest of the redo of the house, converting that into additional, you know, lounge capability, and then expanding into this great hall, which would be the function facility for, like I said, all types of occasions, whether it's receptions or just corporate functions or what have you. The liquor license, as I have applied for it, because at the time we applied, we were still sort of in the conceptual drawing phase. The square footage and the, the description of the license premises references really to phase one. Before it gets down to the A B C C, I'm gonna want it- I'm gonna want to reference the potential expansion into Phase Two, so that I'm not forced to come back here and change the description of the license premises. I mean, obviously, this one they can't, the liquor license can't be used. So, the short-term goal is to open this up first, have this up and running and operating, while we then expand into Phase Two into the function hall, put that in. A component of this Phase Two is the town sewer which is running by, which is gonna solve our, you know, septic capacity issues. So, once again, here we are, reaping the benefits now of our municipal sewer that we finally approved, and a new liquor license, which you've gotten through home rule petition, that are coming together to stimulate new economic growth on one of the most strategic parcels in the center of town with a destination-type business. You really couldn't have asked for a better culmination of circumstances than might be. So, we feel that in the short term, if we get this open pretty quickly, waiting for sewer to sort of be accessible, speaking with Jeff Haniford, it might be six months to a year, which will coincide with the development of Phase Two. So, you know, we have some other permitting efforts here, obviously. You know, we're going to have to, in my view, go to the planning board for a two-phase site plan review special permit, which is going to analyze, you know, parking and ingress and egress and stormwater management and all that fun stuff, as well as the phasing schedule. I don't know that we have a ZBA appearance, and there may be some things we can do as a matter of right. So, I'm sorry. This way? Sorry for the camera.
She's trying to get a shot.
No, no problem. I can hold. I can hold both up if you want me to try to get a shot of those together. Can you see those on the camera now?
Come back up. There we go.
Okay. So, they're looking to move quickly. Sarah and I had a conversation today, and, you know, if this license is gonna be approved as soon as we get the nod from the ABCC, we're devising a plan set, submittable to the planning board and any of the permit-granting authorities that we have to go to. We'll have our, I mean, obviously, we have an architect lined up and we do have engineers ready to go, but we'll wait for ABCC to actually devise the plans and put, you know, dollars to doughnuts for. And we're gonna move as quickly as the permitting process allows us, and as soon as we have permits in hand, they're looking to begin construction. So, this is, you know, hopefully in the short term, you know, we might be looking, you know, probably six to eight months with Phase One, maybe another six to eight months potentially with Phase Two, depending upon when the sewer connection is gonna be available, you know, what the time of the year is and things of that nature. So, they wanna move on. I think it will be a signature piece for this property, in addition to what you've also done with the town hall and first meeting parish. You have interconnection there in terms of pedestrian access. I'm sure Winslow School, as I heard discussed tonight, is gonna be within the gun sights pretty soon to do something with that property, which will further interconnect our town center. And we get that done and, you know, I think in large part, we've accomplished a long-time vision that we've all had for this town center. So, the fact that you have a business owner that's willing to step to the plate and invest the money, this type of money of this magnitude in this town, and that strategic location for this type of business, and it's not a chain restaurant, it's, you know, it's really sort of a rustic, unique-type pub place that you'd like to see in a small town. Sarah is gonna be the principal of this operation, and she'll have her hands full doing that, and we think it will be a great project. So, we've given you a full package, everything about the entity, everything about Sarah. She's gone so far as to already take a tips certification course, just to show the intent to move forward, and it's a good thing for the town. And I can speak with multiple hats. I speak obviously as Sarah's advocate, but I speak as a forty-year town resident. I speak as a former public official. I speak as a former participant in our zoning and planning objectives. So, I think I've got the institutional knowledge to know that this hits it on all cylinders. So, we hope you recognize it as a great opportunity for the town, and we'd ask that you embrace it. So, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Great, thank you very much. I'll open it up to the board. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Selectman?
Great idea. I love the concept. Just giving a license to an establishment that doesn't exist yet, and I'm not saying I'm against it. Is there a way to condition a permit for, we'll say, Nine Kendall, even though it doesn't exist? The building exists, the businesses, except for the pub.
This would be no different than, let's say, when, you know, On the Border first went up, or Smokey Bones first went up, so it could be conditioned on an occupancy permit.
That's like, this would be my, kind of my first rounds of issuing liquor licenses, and that's what I was thinking, you know, is there something that you condition it based on the new occupancy for the specific business, the pub, you know, as we're talking about understanding Phase Two, it could be, you know, a year away after this gets started. So, I mean, do you, you know, do you typically condition it on something? You just don't give a person a liquor license and an address that may not follow through. I'm not saying that you're not gonna follow through. It's just what's the protocol, what's the protection for the town, so that they guarantee when a license is issued, knock the door, that we're getting...
We would want some flexibility, obviously, in terms of ultimately what the site design is going to be. We're here with a concept and what we think we can do and what we'd like to do, but as you know, when you get drilled down into the nitty-gritty of a site plan analysis with peer-reviewed engineers involved, things may shrink, things may expand, things may shift. So, I would fully expect the board to make use of the liquor license contingent upon an occupancy permit for a structure. I would not want it confined to this specific plan set, because dimensions obviously can change.
Not plan set, but the pub that we're talking about.
Yes, exactly.
The old barn, the renovations to the old barn.
Of course, yes.
To start the future of the new facility.
Absolutely.
Not saying if this doesn't happen, that...
No, it would be, it would be an occupancy permit for Phase One, and a further condition of an occupancy permit for Phase Two. I would expect those to be conditions for that very reason. That helps me?
Any further questions?
The, just to further add to that, the special licenses that we received for the town, in particular, the ones used around the town center, there was language that was written into those licenses that provide the Board of Selectmen a lot more control over those licenses. Our licenses that we had prior to these, once they were in the hands of a business owner, they were near impossible to get back. They could be bought and sold to different businesses, moved around very easily. These licenses cannot be. They were specific for the intent of trying to find a business owner that wanted to come to our town center to set up and induce this very type of project. The Board of Selectmen, the town administration, has the ability to bring this license back if it's not being used. If this business never happens, the license will simply come back to the town, and it's written into, through the state legislator, that we have the ability to do that. So, I think, you know, very good questions to ask, and typical with our licenses, those are issues that we've had to address, but this would not be a problem with this specific license, because we have a lot more control over it. Additionally, Mr. Chairman, thank you for bringing this forward. It's great when a plan comes together. It's taken a long time, a lot of people, as your attorney had so eloquently described. I am so pleased to see you as a long-term resident, as a board member, as an advocate for our town center, that you're here before it's this evening requesting this. Your business proposal looks wonderful. I'm fully supportive of it. I have one question for it. Is there gonna be outdoor seating at all? It's always been my hope to be able to sit outside in our town center and have a beer. And I'm wondering if I'm ever gonna be able to do that lawfully, so...
Alfrasca dining, I think, is contemplated on the site, you know, but once again, location of the patio, where that's gonna go, there's some devil in the details of the site planning that's gonna take place. So, we would want that flexibility as well. I think ultimately, a further condition in addition to the occupancy permits, you know, we would provide ultimately, once a site plan special permit is approved, and we have real specific defined license premises, meets and bounds, we could supplement that information with that type of data. What we felt is very important to do was to come with this level of detail tonight, actually hire an architect, show that, you know, this is serious business. This is not some pie-in-the-sigai concept that they're not ready to follow through on, for the very reasons I would expect these types of questions, as I would ask them if I were sitting there. So, to show you that, you know, we're moving into a permitting phase of this with a level of detail to give you some comfort, that this is actually gonna move forward, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
I recall, and Selectman Jackson can speak to this more eloquently than I can, the licenses that were requested for town center were very specific in the number of seats. So, which number of seats is this for?
So, thank you, Selectman. So, that, one of the questions that Kurt's passed over to me. So, we have different categories. We have three different categories of licenses within 2,000 feet of Kendall and Middlesex. We have 50 seats, 75 seats, and 100 seats. And then we have one for frontage on Kendall, Middlesex, and Pawtucket. So...
We certainly plan to have more than 100 seats, especially with the function facility coming. So, it would be, and we...
Choice four.
It would be choice four, yeah, which doesn't have the seating limitations, right? It's just the frontage requirement, so... We would wanna have the ability to have maximum occupancy based upon whatever we're permitted for.
Whatever the seating capacity could be, according to parking rules and all that.
Yes.
That's all. Planning board.
So, that will change over time. So, Phase One, when it's open, will be a smaller capacity. Phase Two, it'll increase, and, you know, we'll have the ability to do that.
Anything further, Selectman?
That's exactly what I'm speaking to. If Phase Two doesn't happen, then we've got a 100-seat permit for a facility that doesn't have 100 seats. And, which is why I started as soon as Attorney Nicosia said, well, we're gonna apply for Phase One, and we're gonna write the stuff going to Boston as though it's for Phase Two. And I go, yeah. I can probably be convinced, but right now I'm not.
Well, once again, you know, it's the same. I draw the analogy that, you know, look at the new restaurants that have come to this town with chain restaurants. Carrabba's, Smokey Bones, On the Border, all of those went to the ABCC with no, you know, with no finality in terms of what they had going on. It was, they were going through a permitting phase and building, and, you know, they didn't have the foresight knowing whether or not their special permit for their relevant site plans were gonna be granted or not. It was a reliance upon what the proposed plan was, conditioned upon that, and they rolled forward on that basis. So, the problem, that's a double-edged sword, that analysis, because if you were to restrict us to one of the other occupancy licenses, we apply, everything gets approved, and then we're bottlenecked at that occupancy number, and then another business comes along and snatches that other license up, then where are we? You have a business which is predetermined to potentially fail. So, we would want, you know, we want maximum capabilities here, because we have a specific plan with specific dimensions that we're applying for, and that we think we are able to get at the planning board. So, that's why we want the whole project to be factored into this. I can't tell you what a planning board's gonna do, nor could you have been told when the other three restaurants I just identified came to town. To some degree, you have to rely upon what we believe we can fit on the site and the expectation of permits. But we wanna try to open it in a Phase One, Phase Two fashion to stop bringing business to town, rather than waiting for the whole thing to happen, especially with the sewer component of this.
Now you know why I raised the question?
Yeah. And you have nobody else applying for these licenses right now. You've got one, so you've got one, you got nobody competing over these. You have one business that wants it. They're asking for it. They have a plan to support it. No one else is looking for it. Why not put it into play?
So, my thought on that issue would be, number one, I don't know, I can't think of another parcel in that immediate area that would support 100-plus.
I don't think it would either.
The other, to follow on Selectman Jackson's comment in terms of the town's control over the licenses, if you ended up not proceeding with Phase Two and you had a 75-seat Phase One, I mean, it sounds to me like we'd have the ability to switch the license
Absolutely.
With one that you use and free up the unlimited seat number for somebody that may want it. So...
Absolutely.
I can see some flexibility for us there. The only other, you know, I don't know if this is even possible, but some sort of a condition of timeframe on when Phase Two would be started, completed. I don't even know that you could come up with a date at this point.
Yeah, that's kind of a sliding scale, just like when you look at the pocket licenses in town, you know, and you have businesses that lie dormant and they're trying to sell. What are we doing with the license? I think to some degree, there has to be some flexibility here, because, you know, maybe there are unusual site conditions that delay construction or some delay in the sewer line or things of that nature. I mean, as long as we're using due diligence and reasonable efforts to bring this about, as opposed to just sitting on a pocket license, you know, and that, and to be quite candid with you, that's gonna be an annual analysis when you go to renew these things.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Thank you. We've waited over a decade to get to this point in time. The licenses that we as a board requested were written with very specific purpose. One, to be able to support a business like this coming before us or other types of businesses, and two, so we could obtain these licenses. We could not obtain four unlimited seating, all alcohol restaurant licenses to be in our town center. It would not have been supported, and we wouldn't have got that. So, we wrote it with the knowledge of how to obtain the licenses to be able to support whatever type of business came. If you sat here and said you wanted to do a 50-person business, we'd say, we have a license for that. 75, we have a license. A higher number, we have the license. You are the first person. You might be the only person, only business that comes before us to do this. Again, to my fellow board members, to the community, to you, I would like to offer you my full support in obtaining that license. I do think it's wise to have some contingencies placed upon it for occupancy and things like that. And also for you to go in with a full knowledge that this is a different type of alcohol license than Tinsborough normally would give out, because this board does have a lot of control over it. The, our state legislator allowed us the ability to bring it back, to switch it out, if it turns out that your business doesn't do the types of things that you described, and I hope that it does. We'll sit down and we'll just simply, you know, give you a license that's appropriate for your business. But as described, I'm fully supportive of the license that's not encumbered by a ceiling of patrons that you can service at any particular point in time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the board? Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the board? I'll open it up to, uh, the public. If there's anybody in the public, um, that would like to speak for or against. Seeing nobody. Um, okay. Anything further from town administration?
No, I think we would just have to designate which, if we're gonna choose this one or unlimited, I think the board would wanna recognize which one that they're issuing, so we'll keep that for our, for our records. My only, uh, other thought, if I could, would be, uh, maybe a potential timeline for the occupancy permit, at which point they would need to ask for a renewal, 'cause, um, as Selakman Jackson said, that, um, town definitely has the authority to pull back the license. The only vagrant in the language is a, is a timeline, so that'd be my only, you know, thought that I may wanna consider. Um, within, say, a, a year or a year and a half to obtain the occupancy permit. If not, they'd have to ask for a renewal from the board, just 'cause I see it as a little vague, just as a suggestion.
Well, we have the annual renewal process, so.
I mean, I, I would, I mean, I, her goal is to open up as quickly as possible. So, let's, let's get that right out there. But if, if we were gonna impose outside time deadlines, they're gonna have to be fairly liberal to account for things that I can't think of right now. So, if you were to say, uh, one year for occupancy for Phase One, and by the end of the second year, occupancy for Phase Two, you know, with some outside dates, um, it's consistent with the phasing schedule the planning board has set past, um, different things. I, you know, if you're looking for dates, that's what I would probably throw out arbitrarily.
I, I don't know that we necessarily need dates.
Mr. Chairman, but by definition of the license that we obtained, if, if a business lies dormant for six months, we have the ability to pull the license back. So, we, we, I, I don't even know if we can extend it beyond that per se by a vote of the board, because that was something that was agreed on by our state legislator to, legislators to, uh, allow us that authority. So, I don't know if we can overrule the state in that. I certainly, in a six-month time period, wouldn't say you, you've missed it by a day and, you know, we, we want our license back. Um, I, I think that would be remiss of this board to, to proceed in that way. But, you know, we, we can say a year. I, I certainly have no problem with a year not to extend a year that, that you have occupancy. But again, by definition of the license, it's set at six months, so anytime after that six-month period of time, we, we could.
Well, we, I would expect, yeah, I would expect that, you know, if we're not permitted and occupied by the six-month initial deadline, but we're using due diligence and moving forward in that process, we give you a status report as to where we are. You know, I would obviously be expecting cooperation in whatever those processes are to get to the end result. And I know you wanna afford that, you know? You're not gonna be rigid in that regards. What, we fully understand the concept of avoiding these pocket licenses. We, she, she's been well advised as to that, and, uh, we'll move forward with, uh, good faith and due diligence.
So, I mean, my only further comment is, um.
And then occupancy permits.
As Selakman Jackson, um, talked about, you know, that that parcel is, and as your attorney, uh, commented, that that really is the parcel that we all envisioned to be developed. Um, I'm thrilled that, uh, as others have said tonight, you've stepped up to the plate. Um, you've got, it sounds like you're gonna invest a lot of time and money. Um, I like the concept. I like the idea of the, the rustic pub. Um, I think if we have, um, uh, the protections that are in place by the law that allows us to give these licenses, um, I don't think we need to make it any more restrictive than that. Um, I, um, I don't think anybody here expects you to be done in six months. Um, so.
We won't be.
We, we, it's known tonight that that's not gonna happen. Um, so, on, you know, one day after that, we're not gonna be looking to pull the license back. So, um, I'd be comfortable with, uh, the license being granted without that sort of arbitrary timeline put on it, um, and that if an issue comes up, we'll work together to make this project happen. Would be my, my mindset, um, on that, so. Any, uh.
Did you, occupancy permit, one year, two years?
Subject to an occupancy permit.
Okay.
Which would need, that, that, that's stating the, uh, stating the, uh, fact that exists no matter whether it's a condition or not. So, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Just a procedural question. Will, if the package, if it's approved tonight and the package goes down to A B C C, do they approve it and send you the license? Or do they wait until you have?
Nope. They'll send it back. They'll send the Form forty-three back here approved. You guys will create the license. Uh, you just won't issue it from the Board of Selectmen's office until such time as we can show an occupancy permit.
All right.
I guess that answers my question. So, they won't issue it till?
I can't physically pick it up unless I exchange that with a check and an occupancy permit.
I didn't know if we had a full alcohol bakery going on, so that, I just wanted to be sure there was some safeguard.
You never know.
We actually need.
Sounds nice.
It does, but.
So, once again, you know, occupancy for Phase One, we would be coming in to, to activate this license and get going, operating, and then ultimately, we'd have to show an occupancy for Phase Two and to expand the license premises.
Any further, uh, comments, questions from the board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries four zero zero. And I will entertain a motion to grant the, uh, license requested.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen grant the, uh, requested, um, all-alcohol restaurant licenses generated through the Special Act of our state legislators, um, with frontage on Kendall, Middlesex, and Pawtucket Boulevards and, and/or, um, to, not that business, to Firewell House LLC with the following conditions placed upon it. That there is a occupancy permit obtained within one year for Phase One and within two years for the description of Phase Two.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Now I'm behind. Okay, we gotta catch up. Seven-thirty, public hearing, Touch a Truck Special Permit. Mr. Town Administrator.
Uh, yes, thank you. As the, uh, board is, uh, familiar with the Touch a Truck, uh, um, fair, event, I guess, um, the, uh, they, they take an area of the mall parking lot, which happens to be in, uh, Tingsborough, to display, uh, fire trucks, dump trucks, uh, police, uh, trucks, heavy equipment type of stuff that allows, um, uh, children and families to, uh, see the, the equipment close-up that they wouldn't normally do. Uh, so, the, um, Pheasant Lane Mall is hosting this event, and part of that, uh, we would require, require under zoning bylaw, under Section four point one-three, which is a special permit issued by the, uh, Board of Selectmen, uh, for a fair carnival or similar event. Uh, so, the applicant is here, uh, this evening to answer any questions the board may have.
Come on up. Thanks for being here.
Oh, you're welcome.
Just wanna introduce yourself and.
I'm Ashley Wheeler, the Director of Marketing for Pheasant Lane. Um, this is just an annual event we've held every year since two thousand and eleven. Um, it's a family-friendly event. We have a Tingsborough Police Detail at the event, as well as Tingsborough Police onsite with their vehicles, Nashville Police, Tingsborough Fire Department, so we have a lot, and an ambulance as well, so. It's a very safe, easy event, turnkey, held it for many years without issues, so.
Um, this is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
So, um, may I have a motion to open the public portion of the hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries four zero zero. Um, is there, uh, legal notice in the butters list as well on this one, for special permit?
Yes.
So, a motion to waive reading of the legal notice and the butters list?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, that carries four zero zero. So, um, thank you, uh, for bringing this back. It's always a great event to have. Um, any changes this year from what you've done in the past?
Um, nope. It should be exactly the same. Maybe there's gonna be a different paving vehicle or something, but other than that, it's exactly the same. Same parking, sectioned off, so.
And, um, Mr. Town Administrator, have you had discussions with the applicant about the permit, the restrictions, and coordinating with our police department and all that?
I haven't. Uh, we did talk to the, uh, police department. They're very familiar with it. They, they participate in the program as well. Uh, they've been part of the, uh, of the event for the past several years.
Any questions, comments from the board?
I do not, Mr. Chair. Ms., oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, um, I, I can't seem to find it in here, so the, uh, what, what was the date of your event going to be?
It's gonna be this Saturday, June twenty-fifth, from ten to one.
Twenty-fifth, and did you have a rain date?
Um, we do not.
So, it's June twenty-fifth or?
Yeah. If it rains, we'll cancel the event.
The, uh, also, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, Mr. Town Administrator, do you, do you know the, uh, for the police details, has there ever been any issues with police details being paid through this event or from this event?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. After speaking with the chief, he was, uh, supportive of the, uh, event.
The, uh, uh, as am I. You've come before us many times, and it's, it seems to be always a very well-run event. Um, I asked that question, but some offenders come before us, and then they forget to pay the police department after, uh, they've had their event. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, this is a, uh, public hearing. Anybody in the audience? I don't see anybody, so, uh, I will, um, entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries four zero zero. So, the, uh, we need a motion to, um, approve or grant the special permit as requested with the, um, findings, um, in accordance with the intent of the bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that the Board of Selectmen approved the request for Touch a Truck Special Permit at four thirty-five Middlesex Road, uh, for a special permit under Section four point thirteen point zero, fairs, carnivals, and similar events for June twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, the times as described in the event, as described and presented before us this evening within our packages.
Second.
We have to put in the.
Can we read all this?
The, the findings under the bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also, do, do, is this part of the motion or something that we should?
Should be part of the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to, uh, add to my, amend my motion to include that, uh, this event is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. It will not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is to take place, is appropriate for the site in question, and com-complies with all applicable requirements of this bylaw, and the bylaw that I'm referencing would be.
Zoning bylaw.
The zoning bylaw. Do we need to reference a specific section or chapter of that? Or our zoning bylaw that would cover such things. I so amend my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lambert?
What are we voting on?
We are voting on the, uh.
Amendment?
No, I, we never got to vote. I've been, I don't know, good point. Voting on the amendment.
The motion on the floor is to, uh, include the additional findings under the bo-zoning bylaw as required. That's what we're voting on.
Two, two motions.
Yes.
No, one motion. The motion on the floor is to grant the permit with the specific findings. Okay? Okay?
Would you like me to amend it to, do we vote on it?
You said you were amending it.
He amended to add that to the motion.
And he seconded it.
If we're all clear on the motion that's on the floor, we can vote on it, so. Does everybody understand the motion?
Okay.
You understand it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, that carries four zero zero. Great. Thank you very much. Good luck. I hope, uh, I hope it's not raining.
Oh, me too. Thank you.
We are on, uh, Selectmen's Reports. Mr. Town Administrator, is that where we are?
There we are.
We are.
Okay, Selectmen's Reports. I'll start from my left. Selectman Akko.
I have mine.
Nothing?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I only wrote up a half a page of notes that I'd like to just quickly go over. The, uh, so, the, the first item that I had on here is just something I wanted to propose to the boards for thought. Um, I, we, we've talked a lot about our, um, adding positions to the town and, and looking at efficiencies of positions and things like that over the years. And, and what I'd like this board to do, and not necessarily tonight, but it, it is soon, uh, date, um, I, I'd like to empower the town administrator, the assistant town administrator, to look at work efficiencies, optimizations, uh, productivity evaluation, um, to look at things, um, look at the available resources, the people, the, their time, the, the right people, too, uh, too little, too much time allocations, the addition of people, things like planners, engineers, et cetera, um, the combining of positions, or maybe the elimination of positions, training programs, flexible scheduling, um, basically to do a complete review of the, uh, the employees and the positions of our town, less the school, things that fall under the school department, and come back to the Board of Selectmen and, and make a, with a report, a recommendation as to whether or not we're doing things optimally the best that we can or if there's suggestions for improvements and things that we could act upon.
If, if I could, before you moved on, I was taking notes on that. After training, I think you had mentioned one other thing. Did I hear that correctly? Combining of positions, training?
So, I, I had, uh, look at available resources, people, time, um, and, and this is not a, certainly a comprehensive list. This was just a few things to pull together. Um, right people in positions, the, the amount of time that they're allocated to do their jobs, additional people, planners, engineers, et cetera, the combining of positions or the elimination of positions, training programs, flexible scheduling of, of time, um, certainly not intended to be a, a, a list of, of the only things. Um, I, I would actually would prefer, from my standpoint, to have professionals like yourself that are more familiar with the different positions within a town and what it takes to run a community like ours. Just to simply look at it and say, are, are we doing things correctly from a, you know, are we providing the right types of services and spending the taxpayers' money in the correct ways? And could we do a better job? I always believe we can always do a better job if you, if you look at it. There's always continuous improvement. And to simply put it together, bring it back to this Board of Selectmen, describe your findings to us, uh, recommendations that you would have, and to see if this board would have any interest in, uh, uh, moving forward on any of those recommendations. And I'm, I'm not asking for the board to either support or not support this tonight unless you're vehemently against it. Then certainly, we might as well kill it right now. Uh, but just to think about it, we can bring it up at a future meeting. Everyone can have input and ideas for what the administration might be looking at. Um, certainly, they would probably have some good ideas, and just move it forward or, or not.
No objections. Fully support.
So, so maybe we could have a discussion on that at a, at a future meeting, some ideas and thoughts on it. The, the second item I wanted to quickly talk about, uh, we, we talked about the pilot program in Tingsborough, the payment in lieu of taxes qu-quite a bit. Um, and I, I know we got a little feedback. We had, the board, uh, had voted to send out letters to various businesses, um, or entities that are tax-exempt in our community and offer up, um, their ability to, um, provide, uh, uh, some type of revenue for services they receive within our community, and I, and I, I know, um, it, it, some of the information we got back, I don't think that was really perhaps maybe well-received, um, from those entities. I, I don't know, and again, I'm not looking for action tonight, but perhaps we can revisit that. Um, so, some of the things that I, I think about, um, you know, I, I, I see a number of our, our, uh, tax-exempt, um, um, parcels or, uh, I don't wanna call them businesses, but entities within the, the town, you know, they, they seem to be receiving trash collection. Um, it's, it's hard to quantify having a, a police vehicle at, at the ready to come to you or a fire vehicle or all the services that we provide as a. at, at the ready to come to you, or a fire vehicle, or all the services that we provide as a community, but things like trash or other things are very tangible, um, very things that you can put a cost on, and I, I, I have to wonder, are, are they paying for those services, are, are the taxpayers subsidizing the free collection of their, you know, trash, or, you know, sometimes we, we seem to plow or sand certain private properties? Um, just something to think about or look at, and, and if we would want to maybe change the wording of some of our pilot program letters or things, if we wish to pursue that. Um, some food for thought. Next item, the, the First Parish Meeting House, um, it seemed that maybe there was some activity that took place there the other day, and the, uh, I, I would, would like to strongly encourage that we have an alarm system within, within that structure to, uh, if there's, if there's any type of, uh, folks that might enter there, enter there that, that we're unaware of, so that the police can come and, uh, um, acknowledge that they're inside our building where they don't belong and take appropriate action. And that is it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, uh, heartily support the, uh. Acquisition and installation of an alarm for the First Parish Meeting House. Promptly.
Do, do support it?
Do.
Do.
In favor.
Hardly.
Courage. Hardly.
Not hardly.
I thought it was hardly. Getting nervous there.
So I, um, on that, I know our, our town administration is looking at that, on that, so. So my item, um, I have one for tonight, for selectmen's reports, um, has to do with the Adams Barn. I, um. Reached out to a, a company called Custom Barns LLC, they're out of Hooks at New Hampshire. Um, I sent the owner of the company an email, um, I let him know, uh, about our barn, and asked if he'd be interested in taking a look at it, to let us know, uh, what he thought. The company, uh, has been in business for over twenty-seven years, they've done, um, new construction, they've done restoration, they've done recycling, relocation, demolition, and salvage of, of barn materials, and so, um, we've had warrant articles on, on the barn in the past, um, funding to renovate it was, was pulled at town meeting, but funding to, uh, raise the structure, uh, uh, did not pass. I think the vote was a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighteen, um, and that warrant article was written in a way that would have allowed for, uh, deconstruction, uh, to save any, any useful materials, and that, that still didn't pass. And at that town meeting, we had, um. People who are supportive, uh, of, uh, trying to renovate it, um, we, they advocated that there was plans in the works to do something with the barn, um, and, um, nothing has come forward to date. So, what I thought was I'd get some more details on, uh, what are the potential, um. What's the potential value of the barn structure if it were to be, uh. Taken apart, salvaged, and the materials used for something else. So, the owner, Mr. LaPlante, he, uh, contacted him on Friday, he emailed me back, and he was out by Monday afternoon. He met with our assistant town administrator, Mr. Hanson. We, um, I asked, uh, that Warren Algro from the Historic Commission, uh, be contacted ahead of time to see if he would like to be there, um, he, he couldn't make it, it was short notice, I understand. Um, but the owner was available, so I didn't wanna pass on the opportunity to have him come out, so. He did come out, he met, um, at the site with, uh, with Matt, um, he took a tour, um, and, uh, I'll turn it over to Matt to sort of relay, uh, what his thoughts, uh, what the, uh, Mr. LaPlante's thoughts were about the barn, so, Matt?
Great, great, thank you, and so I just, um, basically summarized, um, his ultimate proposal and how he basically came there. He came out there, as I understand, uh, looking to potentially dismantle the barn and salvage it, but, um, he did a very thorough walkthrough of all the floors, um, and basically decided that it wouldn't make sense for him and his company to do a dismantling of the building 'cause there wasn't enough salvageable material. Uh, as I explained in the memo, he thought that some of the foundation stones and, uh, some of the granite, particularly in the basement, and really a few of the larger beams could potentially be salvaged, and his plan and process that he would go through to do that would be to, um, go on just before the, um, demolition would occur and take a few things out, and then be onsite as the demolition was taking place and work with a demolition contractor to load some of the beams, um, and a few of the larger stones onto his trucks and trailers, um, and that would be part of his, part of his cost or his proposal. Um, and he would take anything that he saw that had, would have value, it's just those items, he'd be willing to pay us a thousand dollars for that to help offset the cost for a potential demolition. He just thought that most of the barn structure was really too deteriorated to warrant the, the time and effort to dismantle the barn, 'cause there wasn't enough, enough salvageable material, he said. Um, and there was one window in the upstairs that he would be interested in as well. Um, those were, those were his particular thoughts, and I have the, uh, written proposal that he put together, uh, handwritten here, but I basically did type that up on the front page, so.
So. So, thank you, Matt, I mean, the first thought was to, um, dismantle it, relocate it, rebuild it. Uh, what did he think about that option, was that something that, that, that could be done?
No, he, he, he didn't seem to e- even consider that at all, I mean, he took a very thorough look at the building, but, I mean, and this is just his opinion, I know there's a varied opinions on, on this barn, but he thought most of the structure, not, not only was a lot of it too far deteriorated, but then also, you know, he made notes and comments about the walls that had been, um, basically recreated, and he's like, oh, this is where there was a former building attached to it, and things like that, and that it had all been changed, and so he di- he just personally didn't see any value, uh, in that, he thought that was very limited, very, a very limited amount of wood to actually be salvaged, and it was mostly just the stones, was his biggest comment, that really had any value from a, a barn salvage perspective. And, um, you know, we can, we can reach out to him if the board wanted that in more detail, but that was the, the biggest takeaway from meeting with him anyways.
So, thank you, um, for being available to go meet with him. So after, after hearing that, my thought was, um, did the board have interest in having a landscape architect come out and take a look at the site? Provide a quote, uh, to us as to what it would cost to have a landscape plan put together on the assumption that the barn was not on that lot? What, what, what could we do now that the First Parish exterior would be done? There's gonna be need, you know, need to be changes to the parking. We've pointed out earlier tonight, the, the old right turn off of Kendall Road onto Middlesex, um, absorbing that into the lot, getting rid of the islands that are there. And if the barn wasn't there, we'd have that shore, you know, the, the shoreline along the pond, um, as an area for landscaping and, um. Possible design, you know, use of that, of that area for, for something. So that was my thought, I'm curious if the board, uh, has any comments on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I, I. Want to appreciate additional data points or information, I, I certainly, um, think that that's a, is a way forward and avenue, um, I, I would like to, a- as we've, we've talked about, um, I, I think it's as recently as our last meeting, that. That having this board bring forward in a fall meeting, a couple of options to the residents. Um, and, and certainly, I don't think it needs to be necessarily limited to this board's couple of options, but certainly I think, w- w- one that we've heard over eight years is, is to remove the structure, and whether that structure's removal is demolition, selling it off, relocation, et cetera, the removal of that, so. I- i- in line with that, I think this is good information that someone might be willing to. Pay for, for pieces of it, and, and getting the landscaping information is appropriate. I think it's, it's equally as appropriate to look at the, the real cost of, um. Refurbishing that building into a barn, and understanding what's, what's the cost of doing that. We've, we've taken a few stabs at that, I, I don't know if they were, you know, they were, the best that we probably could do at the time, um, but most importantly, I think, when we bring things forward to the residents this next time in our fall meeting, that we, we have. Actual plans with real costs associated with them, and understanding of funding mechanisms, and whether or not w- we can actually do the things that we're proposing. This, this property, this, these structures, this two structures that were once there, one that's still existing, um, were purchased with CPA funds, um, but by the very definition, that already restricts our ability to either do something new with it, or remove structures or parcels, um, that also changes the funding mechanism. I know that we've had a, um, a, uh, individual from the state who came out last fall, I believe, um, to look at the, the historic nature of that structure, or the determination of whether that building is of historic value or not, and, and for all the folks that are really, uh, keyed into that, if I'm using the appropriate language, I apologize, um, I don't know if that individual's provided us with it, information or not, um, if that, if that building is deemed to be of his, of an historic nature or value, it would further be restrictive as to the funding mechanisms and, um, uses or things that we can do. It doesn't mean that we can't remove it, or we can't refurbish it, it's just how that process takes place. So, a- 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 again, um, I'm supportive of. Full disclosure, full knowledge, in bringing truthful, honest options forward to the residents. If we're gonna remove it, what's the cost, what does that mean, how do we fix the site? If we refurbish it, what do we mean when we say that, what are the costs, how do we do it, what are the funding mechanisms? Um, if we're to do some other choice, something a board member has, or a resident has, or an individual, or the CPC has to bring forward, or the store commission has to bring forward, um, all those things need to be fully vetted, looked at, costed out, and understood, and available for the residents to vote on. And hopefully something would be supportive, supported by the residents, but, um, but again, I, good job getting data and information, and I, I think all that's part of the process, but it. I, I think that it all needs to be brought forward to the residents and let the residents decide what, what it is that they wanna do, other than allowing the building to continue to rot into the ground, and I, I think inaction's the worst choice, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, so just further comment on that, the, um, we did have a proposal with, with architectural plans put forward to renovate the barn, um, that was after the town meeting had approved the funding, which was then later withdrawn. You can correct me, but I think the, the quotes to, uh, the bid that came in was up over three hundred thousand to, uh, to renovate the barn, and I, I believe that was simply to renovate it to the point where it wouldn't fall down, and perhaps the original exterior would be visible, but it didn't include, um, any interior renovations that would allow it to be occupied? Is that, is that accurate?
Outside of being a barn, I think I took, I took a look at those plans, 'cause we were thinking about potentially rebidding it, and it would take a little bit of work to rebid it, which could be done, um, but it would be fixing the interior staircases and, and levels to their barn-like state, but certainly not adding, adding bathrooms or kitchens or offices or anything like that.
Right, to make it a useful building, in other words, people have talked about, you know, uh, a wedding at the church, cocktail hour at the barn, and reception at the Old Town Hall, and, and, and the barn, you, I mean, for the three hundred and sixty, th- what was it, three?
I think three sixty.
Three hundred and sixty thousand. Wouldn't get it to the point where you could go inside and have it decod for occupancy, uh, by, you know, citizens for any kind of function.
That's my understanding.
So.
Just as a barn, yeah, basically, yeah.
So my understanding was that, you know, that, that avenue was, was, was abandoned, I mean, because the, because it became cost prohibitive at that point, um. You know, I haven't seen anything further from. From the Historic Commission, or anybody that would be supportive of renovating it for a useful purpose, so. What I'm looking to do is have a concept, a concrete plan, an architectural drawing of what that area would look like without the barn, um, what it would cost. And so we can take that option to a town meeting, um, so that people understand if they take the barn, they vote to take the barn down, this is what it's gonna look like afterward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
A- a- again, I, I would be a hundred percent supportive of your proposal, but I, but I do believe, having been, uh, part of this process for eight years now, and listened to a number of residents in our town, and a lot of arguments that, that were made, and, and not necessarily weighing in with my opinion on this, I, I think it's fair, with, with a proposal to remove that structure and landscape it, et cetera, and to come up with a costing of it, part of it is selling off some of the materials, I, I think that having that proposal, we'll call it Package A, is, is well warranted, um, should be brought forward to the residents, uh, e- equally, uh, to, to be fair and to represent all the members of the community of Tingsborough, uh, I, I do think that there needs to be a proposal that's brought forward, that would, eh, renovate that structure into a, I'm, I'm gonna term it a usable barn, a usable structure, um, that, I agree with you, the, the proposal that was brought forward before to renovate the outside of it, um, I, I don't think that was the, the way to go. This would be a proposal that should be brought forward to actually make it so that folks, a- anybody could use it, could rent it, could go inside of it, could use it as a barn, not necessarily more or less. Um, and again, if there's other proposals that board members have, tho- those are the two that I think are the most important to bring forward, if there's something other board members have for this board, for other boards or committees in the town, if other residents have things that they wanna bring forward, I am very receptive as a, as a selectman to listen to what they, they have, and I think that process should be given fair consideration, should be costed out, so that it can be brought forward to the residents, so that they know if they vote in favor of option, whatever that option is, what it's gonna cost to do that, and what it means to have it. I mean, clearly taking a building down, it means it's not there anymore, so that's pretty clear. If it turns into a barn, that's pretty clear, if it turns into something else, what is the proposal to do that? And what is the cost to do that, what's the funding mechanism? Can we actually do those things? Remember, this, this, this parcel is encumbered by CPA funding originally, and it, it limits what we can do, if this building is deemed historic or not, or if we can ever make the determination, um, that could further define how this process moves forward, and I, I, the, the next time we go to town meeting on this, the, the last, the last time I felt was an embarrassment, when we sat there and there was still further discussion on the flo- floor of possible things we could do with it, possible ways we could make it work, et cetera, going forward. That's not the time to be making those decisions, I, I, again, I, I asked this board to show leadership in this, Mr. Chairman, I think in part you're doing that with this proposal, to come up with some ideas that we can do, to stand behind how they can happen, to solicit the various boards and committees of this town's input on it, residents, et cetera, to, if they want input, or they want to do it, or if they're satisfied with a proposal we brought forward, they have to be real proposals with rear, real drawings, with a real workforce, with real costs associated with them, et cetera. And let the residents vote on it, and pick something that they wanna do, and, and move it forward, and, and, and then we, we actually do it this time, whether it's the removal, the restoration, or something else. But I, I think it's important that those things are brought forward that way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, selectman.
Uh, just a few years ago, uh. Members of Board of Selectmen. Lots of folks in town wanted to demolish the Old Town Hall. Thank God, we had a few people around that said, hold on, it's a historic structure. The Board of Selectmen and the town, for over ten years, wouldn't give any money to even retard the deterioration of the building. Historic Commission did that with personal labor. Real labor. Didn't cost the town a cent for the real labor of town residents. First Parish Church. People talked about demolishing that, it was disgrace to have that in the town, looking ugly. Purchase contract actually has a demolition clause, which the folks in Boston say is the only one they have ever seen, CPC funds used for preservation with a demolition clause in it. So we have people that don't necessarily speak the whole truth as we go about talking about our old buildings. There are people who would like the center of town as a historic center of town, that it is a place where people would come from Lowell and Nashua for a peaceful, quiet day. They aren't going to come to the center of town for some cement edifice. They need something to come and see. If we knock it down, it won't be there. We had enough money to fix the exterior of it five years ago. Somebody in town government prevented the contractor, who was under contract, from actually performing his contract. The wood was there, the contractor was ready to begin work. The wood is still there, we refer to it tonight, as the logs that are down in the far end of the parking lot. The wood is still on site that was purchased to replank that building. And some people in town government blocked that contractor from completing his work. This is why I say people don't speak the whole truth. That building right now could be looking nice in the center of town if it hadn't been for the action of some people in our town government. I don't know what happened to the money that the contractor would have received. I'm assuming he got paid for the logs that are still on site. But the folks in town who wanted the town to look nice managed to hang on to the Old Town Hall for twelve years. And finally, people said, gee, you know, it might be a good idea. Nowadays, I hear a lot of people saying, gee, that was a good idea. Instead of knocking the First Parish down, we're engaged in an endeavor so that, you know, a year or so, I think people will say, you know, that was a good idea, instead of knocking it down to fix it up and enhance the town center. The Littlefield Library has quite an interesting history. It was being maintained by a private organization at no cost to the town. Members of our town government disinvited the Historic Commission, and they left town along with their artifacts, which were the only town museum.
Selectman, I think you're getting a little off track here, so.
I'm referring to another town building, which is the Littlefield Library.
Hold on, let's stick to the barn.
The barn.
The con, the discussion that we're having now is not a rehash of the history of what's gone on. The discussion right now is, is the board supportive of getting a proposal for landscaping if the barn were gone? Is the board supportive of getting a proposal to renovate it if we keep the barn? So that when we go to town meeting, we have options. We're not here to argue what each of us thinks is the best option, so. Continue with, with that, with that scope on, on your comments.
If we leave the barn alone, it'll still be there for people who do appreciate it and ultimately get enough support in town to fix it up. If you just leave it alone, it'll still be there.
Okay.
And it doesn't require a landscaping.
There's no suggestion tonight that the proposal to take it down moved forward any faster than the proposal to renovate it. The, the discussion is both of those options being given to the town at the same time and that they be allowed to vote on them, knowing each course and letting them choose. That's, that's what we're limiting the discussion to.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have no objection to a landscaping plan with the barn, A, or B, and a landscaping plan without the barn. And I would expect that the landscaping barn will show the barn in its restored beauty and not the way the town has chosen to maintain it.
We can, we can certainly ask that there be a rendering, a color rendering of what it would look like if it was restored. The landscape architect can work with whoever gives us a bid on restoration if we get a second bid or we use the same individual. That's, I've said this before, we ought to have an easel up with large renderings of what it's going to look like. But I think the point tonight is, it doesn't come off well, we don't present well when we don't have that presentation to give to people. And so, we're going to have to invest time and maybe a little bit of money in paying somebody to give us those renderings, give us a landscape plan that's professionally done. Because what I don't want to hear at town meeting again is high school kids with "Save the Barn" t-shirts stand up and tell me they have an idea for the barn with nothing to back that up. And it's the same story that I've heard since my first town meeting in 2006. It's been ten years, and I've heard about saving the barn. And I watched all the selectman meetings when the Sherfine was being taken down, and we saved the barn to make sure that it was still there so we could do something with it. And here we are, all this time later, and we have one proposal that came way over budget. So, I'd like to know, and I'd like us to send a letter to the Historic Commission that invites them and says, you were last before the board on such and such a date, what have you done since then? Tell us. I've spoken to Warren, he's, he's got ideas for it. Let's get them on paper, let's get renderings of what that's going to look like. Maybe those who are in favor of taking that barn down are persuaded otherwise. But we'll never know if we don't have two concrete or more, two or more, plans to present. And, and that's what I'm looking for us as a board to do. With no agenda in mind, other than to simply get those proposals on the table. So that's, I hope clarifies, I'm happy you're passionate about this, everybody is.
Mr. Chair?
And I think people want a decision one way or another, so.
If people had pushed, as you are currently pushing, we wouldn't have an Old Town Hall. Because renderings were provided over and over and over again to this board of selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen chose to, ah, could you bring us a rendering of the town hall? They tried for twelve years, Mr. Chair.
Hold off, I don't want to argue about what prior boards of selectmen have done. So, tonight's not the night to debate or argue about what's been done in the past. This is the board that we have today, and we need to move this forward, so.
Mr. Chair, I don't agree that we need to move this forward.
Okay, thank you. Selectman, anything further?
I, I stand by what I said. I, I think that there's, you know, this, this, clearly this is a very sensitive issue. I'm, I'm one of, one of two selectmen that actually helped save the barn, bringing out the way the Warren article was written all those years ago and that it was, that the, the wording of it was not to demolish the barn and sat here and argued that point. But it was never with the thought that all these years later, we'd still be discussing what to do with the barn, whether to save it, get rid of it, renovate it, turn it into something else, whatever. I mean, if we could go back in time, probably would have, you know, had a more robust discussion then. I think we owe it to our residents, the people that live in this community, to bring options forward. I, I, I don't think doing nothing is an option. I, I believe in, in bringing those options forward, as we did for other structures in this community, for the community to determine what they want to do. Renovating that structure is a great idea, turning it into a useful structure is a great idea. I, I think we need to bring these ideas forward to what the residents want to do, what they're willing to fund. At our last town meeting, they didn't want to save it, and they didn't want to get rid of it. So we, you know, I'm not sure how much more we could have sat on the fence than not wanting to do anything. And if, if, if we bring it to another town meeting and we don't want to do anything again, as God is my witness, I will never talk about this again. That barn can sit there forever for the remaining years of my term as a selectman. Won't talk about it anymore. I, I think we need to remove it or save it. We need to do something with it, we need to have discussion, we need to have everyone to get input on this, to come up with ideas what they want to do. It needs to be well documented, it needs to be funded, it needs to be actionable, and it needs to be voted on, and we got to do it.
Mr. Chair? I disagree with the comments that we have to do it because the Old Town Hall existed for years and years and years with the Historical Commission coming forward every year with drawings and presentations. And it was through inaction by the town government that, and the grace of God, that we now have an Old Town Hall.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate your comments, I understand them. Final word, I would just say that I think things are a little bit different now. We've got, the Old Town Hall is renovated, First Parish is about to be renovated. We had tonight somebody come in and tell us they're going to renovate and create a beautiful restaurant in that town center. And to have all of that work go on, and Town Sewer to come through there, and to have that entire area beautified with a barn in the current condition. However it got there, I don't know. You know that more, better than I do, and you know why or why not things got done. I don't. But what I would hate to see is nothing happen with everything around that area being renovated and brought, you know, to life, and, and that structure is viewed as if it was in the way. So, as Selectman Jackson said, and I've said tonight, and I appreciate your comments as well, but the time, in my opinion, the time is now. We either, you know, do something with it now. I think you strike while the iron's hot, so. That's what I'm looking to do. And you're certainly welcome to advocate the position that we do nothing as this board gets these proposals, and certainly a town meeting, so. Okay, so that's it for selectmen's reports. We have executive session, we have two items tonight, exemption three, exemption two. I need a motion to go into executive session, coming out only to adjourn.
Do we need, so moved?
Second.
Uh, just.
Do we need to, Mr. Chair, do we need to read them?
Yeah, I was, I made an assumption, if you would read those.
Mr. Chairman, what are we going to do with the motion on the floor?
It's withdrawn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen go into executive session only to come out to adjourn for exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, bid managers SEIU, NEPBA slash Local Eight, bracketed off SIC Bank, and for exemption two to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and the chair so declares, Assistant Town Administrator, non-union personnel.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call vote, starting with Selectman Nocco.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. That carries for zero zero. Thank you, good evening, our next meeting is?
Special Town Meeting, June eighth, twenty eighth.
Special Town Meeting, June twenty eighth, it's at the Old Town Hall, not the elementary school. We are voting on one warrant article to provide additional funding for the First Parish Meeting House project. So, it should be a very quick meeting, starts at seven PM.
Yes.
Old Town Hall, hope to see you there. Thank you, good night.